And the paperwork's on, Victor, for your signature.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
Okay, I think so. Moved. We moved that we had accepted.
Let me just read what was signed. We hereby debate the following two thousand and sixteen tax on the amount of set forth below, and you will be relieved of responsibility to collect same and express to the person that you want. Let's do duplicate assessment. Second, third, all in favor?
Thank you very much, no further questions.
No further questions.
Would you stay for a agenda item on dangerous?
Mark.
Excuse us while one of the selectmen breaks into song.
All right.
We haven't changed our name to Singing Swetman yet. Here it is.
There you go.
It's been on fishing boat too long.
That's right.
Send you over to.
Sand pillow, sit down.
So, in both parts, were you gonna?
Musical.
Could you stay for Dangerous Buildings Agenda Item? It's, I'll tell you which one you're.
Yes, I can, if you want.
We do. We've got your input.
Okay, great.
So, take.
How long do I have to wait?
Stay in the audience for two items and then we'll be up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Motion sent to the boards.
Second. All in favor? The first one's from Dan. The first one's from Dan. While you're signing the warrants, we have two minutes to approve of one. The regular select board minutes of June fourteenth. So, if you will review them, take a minute to review them. I would like the motion to second minutes as written.
Motion approved second minutes as written on June fourteenth, twenty seventeen.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
While I'm at it, I'm roll, I motion approve the minutes as written, June fifteenth. This is something to be.
It's a special. It's June fifteenth, and that was just for.
That's where the apple.
No, thank you very much for coming to that. That was short notice and I appreciate it. Motion second? Seconded, all in favor? So, under old business, we have park use permit application that we worked on last week, and Renee was nice enough to fix the request that we had made for her to add no generator use, and I'd like her to review that and see if that is applicable. We do have, Renee, you go ahead and make a sign that's going to be put up. Did you do the long one that you could read? So, there was a couple of choices, but we went with the one that was regular shape and that you could read the whole rule in one line. So, the rules are sunrise is sunset, no alcohol, beverages or drugs, all tech must be placed in proper receptacles, can use the state when scheduled events, require a permit, no overnight camping or parking, no generator use. So, I think that looks really good. It's on one page, and it's very easy to understand if you use electricity, pay twenty-five dollars. And. She just said something, I'm sure. So.
This looks very good. We need. This looks acceptable. The neighbors will love it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept this, this stock part rule.
Second.
Uh-oh. Second. Let's just hold on and vote on that, because she might have something to say on that. We're just gonna hold on that, vote on the.
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, this is a motion. You have to do a motion second before you can discuss it. So, if she has anything to discuss, then we'll let her discuss during discussion time.
In the meantime.
In the meantime.
In the meantime. I'd like to ask a question regarding, does the park use permit application, is that when they find out, they may need tulips?
Oh, do they need insurance?
Yeah, tulip.
Yeah, it's all an application. Everybody provided copy of the vendor's share.
Okay.
And just, I've got something else to you, Mike. It used to be that at the select board meetings, you couldn't speak until the end, but ever since the last three years that Dan and I have been on the board, when there is an issue pending vote, we have always allowed public input at the time before.
I fully understood that long ago, because you as select board members need to look at your audience and see who has pertinent information regarding, so you've always had the ability to allow the public to speak.
Right, that's what I was.
Okay, not bad of you.
Thank you.
I did have this controversy.
That's not bad of you.
There was a lot of controversy.
Yes.
With a family dollar, I think. That was when this.
So, before I forget, keep your careful on the roof, please.
Okay, we have waited to vote on these Stockford Park rules. Joanne, because we knew you might want to review it as well, and we stopped at discussion. We're on discussion. There's a motion on the floor.
I'm good. It's a good one.
All right. So, I made a motion that we accept the Stockford Park rules as written. Do I accept, do I have a second? All in favor? You can let Fred know. Town sign policy for my application. What's that?
What, a corner policy agreement, is that that?
Yeah.
Is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, I hadn't seen that. Oh, sure, I read this. Oh, this is for the green side. Oh, I was getting this up in Park.
Give it a day.
Okay, applicant must, Stephanie. Applicant must come to the town office to go out and application during business hours is available to not hold the sign for longer than seven days. The sign can be reserved up to thirty days in advance and is on the first come, first served basis to time. The town has first priority. It's, that's also the school. The town and the school too. The school has priority as well.
You have a word.
The town and then the school. If the school hasn't functioned, I would think that they would be a priority after the town.
Okay, we do that.
But you have the sign reserved, and there is a town event that comes up on a, they should be incorporate town being defined as town or the school. Do we, do we agree with that?
Yes, town one, school second.
Well, something like that.
Yes.
Applicants, applicant agrees to pick up letters and return them immediately. The office applicant agrees to return short letters. Letters have to be returned by twelve P M. on the next business day after the event unless the event is on a Saturday, then they would be returned on the Monday. They are considered late because someone else might have to reserve them that day. Late consequences, first verbal warning, second offense to you and for your organization will be forfeiting the use of the sign for three months. And I have to know that the chamber didn't remove the letters on time, and we did get that, we did get that three month. A lot of this has already been in place.
Yes. It's just official. Yeah.
So, definitely come get your letters the next day. Okay, we have a motion to accept that? You changed it, right?
Tell me.
Yeah, I will, I will make a change. Okay. Pay me the changes. Second, all in favor? New business, Jim Bockett, Park House. You're up. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for the loan. As you know, I've been working on this grave site project down from the shipwreck from Long Island, down on the coast of the sister plant. I know that there was some concern about where the town owns all this private property. Well, I've been working with Rachel on this, and I couldn't locate a survey map anywhere of the town property and when the subject treatment plant was built. I looked through county records in Metchias, and there's nothing that I could find on record. I don't know what happened. Maybe they had a survey and it was never recorded, but I went into the subject treatment plant, and they were very helpful in there, and they've got these big construction maps, and I've got a abbreviated copy of one. I was telling you about it, Rachel.
Do we have a copy of that?
You can, you can see the full map down at the plant, or you can make copies of this. I just bought one, you can have this. And it clearly shows the graves right here, and it shows the last manhole cover in the road, and they're pretty much directly across the road from the manhole cover, so that really pins it down.
So, it's clearly indicated.
Yes. I was off by a couple of feet right by the bus, but it was close.
So, it's, yeah.
But that's the best we have, and short of hiring surveyors to come down and survey the town property, I think that's the best we can come up with.
Yeah, I don't, that would be too much, I think.
So, that was actually on there?
On my end. Yeah, it's on the construction map.
Jim has something to add, too.
I went down and looked at this, Jim, and it's pretty clear that when they extended, you know, was it Pleasant Street?
Mm-hmm.
Down there, that they realized they had those graves there, so they angled Pleasant Street over, the out of boundary of it, they angled it over and did not pay right up to the graves.
Yeah.
But the graves are still in the right of way. The right of way is there, so the graves are in the right of way. I also looked at the deed and read the deeds for the property, and I got that, and I haven't had time to talk to Jim about this, but the mess and bounds of the aboveing lot to the road down there, you know, where these are, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't indicate that these graves are in that lot. They're, they're outside in the right of way of the road, so that's my take on it.
I've also got a letter from Bernard Ross and Historical Society back in nineteen ninety-seven to a Mrs. Jellison from Massachusetts who had been inquiring about my gravesite, and I highlighted the pertinent part here about the road. The road was originally going to go right over the graves, and Historical Society went to the town and asked them, you know, you can't do this, so what they did was they considered exhuming the graves and moving them, but they didn't. They jogged the road around closer to the subject treatment plant, which means the original road was going to go right over the gravesite, which would back up what that map shows.
So, would it be valid if we read this?
Oh, you can.
I think we should read it. When the new sewage plant was constructed, it proposed extension Pleasant Street to reach the site that passed through the two graves. The Historical Society wants the town officials to discuss preservation of the site or possible relocation of the remains. As legal ramifications were not explored, that might pertain to relocation. Pleasant Street was swerved slightly to the west to go around the site, and barriers were placed or construction machinery would not create more damage. You're doing all a good research.
Thanks, that's the best. I kind of get that and on the rest of it.
Pretty good.
And I contacted a monument company in Lewiston, and they came up with this proposed design for a flat marker. It's granite.
Oh.
And I told them that vandalism had been an issue in the past.
Tony? Joanne?
Vandalism.
That's very nice. So, a flat walk?
Yes, I asked him the recommendation because we had trouble with vandalism, stones were broken and stolen, and he told me in his experience, if there's a vandalism issue, a flush mounted marker is the best way, that very seldom. I was thinking about like a plaque on a rock or something.
Yeah.
But he said that that can be a problem with people vandalizing it and trying to pry it off. And here was a price of what he would do that for.
That was my next question. Five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
That's tax included and delivered.
Is that thirty-five, it took me that far a shot?
It's not worth thirty-five dollars, you've got in Lewiston.
I'd say that probably not.
You can have all these papers. So, I guess what my request is to the board to consider this and give permission for me to proceed and try to raise money for the stone and then have it purchased and set into place.
I have no problem.
I have one question. I have some interest in this matter, Jim. And I understand that there is two schools of thought as to what was the name of the ship that these two sailors died were buried, so are you positive one hundred percent? Because once it's carved in stone.
Right.
You're living. And it was the Morning Star. I happen to like the name, I think it's a cool name, but what did Mr. Ball want?
It was two hundred years ago, so I can't trust it right. But John's done some research on it, and so have I, and so has Virginia McCaslin, and are you care to speak on the name of the ship at all?
I've seen no evidence that it had any other name.
Right.
This precedes actual legal records.
Right. And there's been numerous newspaper articles in the past on it, through magazine articles, and everything that I've seen says Morning Star.
I think it's awesome, I give congratulations on all your efforts. Last meeting, we weren't even sure where, and now we've got the where and the how.
How do you post? Are you asking for the taxpayers to pay for it?
Well, that was my other question, if there's any possible way that there's money in some budgetary fund that could help contribute. I plan to do a fundraiser, but I wanted permission to proceed before I ask people for money, so. And Fourth of July is coming up, I was gonna try to see if some of the local businesses would allow me to put a donation jar or something down, because there'll be a lot of people in town. That's why I was glad to be able to come tonight. Did someone ask how much it is?
Yeah, we heard, I heard that.
Yeah. You know how much?
They have booths that you can put up in the street where they have fundraisers in the fourth of July community, you might want to ask them if they'd let you.
So, do you, also a jar, you put jars in various places. I would suggest that you put copies of this around the jar to put it at the sea.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Because that's an impressive.
Yeah, I thought it was nice, very nice. And I also spoke with Kathy Morris down at the elementary school, and she said that her class would be willing to do a fundraiser and maybe sell some hot dogs down at Stockford Park or something like that.
Right, now, what's gonna prevent the plows from destroying the?
Well, it's not in the road.
Oh, it's not in, it's not in the.
No, it's not in the road, it's just off of the road.
Jim, it's not in the, if it's in the right way, is it not in the area you can plow?
It'll be very, no. It's not, it's not, it's not a rise, it's above the level of the road.
It won't be over.
The plow won't get it.
Okay, oh, it's not a rise?
Yeah, 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 they didn't, they didn't plow.
Definitely come up with that.
Oh, okay. I'll have to go down and look.
I would like to say that.
Start of the. Well, it's very kind of that.
Well, great, your mother.
I don't know why I feel so strongly about this project, but I've been interested in for the last ten years.
Yeah, you have, you can commit it.
No, I just think it was the right thing to do.
And I'm glad you do it, because a lot of us are so strapped for time, we don't have the time we're given to it. But you've done that, and you're to be commended for that.
Thank you.
I don't know where we stand on the budget on that. I think that, you know, maybe what we could do is do like a matching fund, see what the town.
I was thinking that.
See what you can come up with between now and July eleventh, and then if you need more, then we could perhaps put on an article for town meeting.
Yes.
And it's all.
You need to know before July eleventh.
Yep.
Take it from the fireworks.
We're having fireworks.
Jim?
Would it be possible, or, you know, I don't know much about this kind of stuff, but would it be possible for the town to open a fund in the town's name, and that way when people donate, we will tax it.
Yeah, they go fund. Well, no, nonprofit then, if we sponsored it, then they would, it would be a donation, considered a donation as opposed to, if we're a nonprofit. Well, it's gonna be a town.
Not yet, it hasn't been.
What's that?
He's talking donations and putting.
Is there, is there something we could put on our website?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Either of them veterans?
Pardon me?
We don't, we don't have information on that. They were, it was a commercial ship, uh, port on.
That would probably get a very good spot.
Well, if they were buried, maybe it not fall under cemetery, once they create a plaque and then Renee said that they would mow around it. So, it, what do you think, Joanne?
I think it should fall under the historical design.
That's, that's right, yeah.
I remember, I remember the iron, the iron posts that were around it, and, and it was, they were destroyed by, three were, three were, it was four, whatever.
I remember one of the stones, there were two originally, iron was sawed off.
People just drove over them, people just drove over them, drove over them.
Does that still happen down there?
I'm not sure right now. Now, I don't know.
I haven't seen it.
I don't, yeah, but they did drive over.
I don't know if it's.
I would think that this would include a wall fence.
That would be nice, but I didn't think we'd have the money for that, but that would be wonderful.
I think it should be that.
Well, if we talk to.
And if it fell in the Historical Society, you're doing nonprofit, it would be, you know, all that.
So, we don't have anybody from the Historical Society to agree to take it, so, but we could propose.
Well, we have someone close to the Historical Society.
Right. Could you present it to the, you are on the board, Cecil, could you present it to the board that if it was fact, this project went to the Historical Society, then they could hold the donations from your nonprofit status?
Yep.
And maybe the town could contribute something for the wealth.
We have four posts that have the cap, so we could run a chain.
I'm sure if we all work together, we will get this.
Yes, I'd love this idea.
That'd be great, because I was concerned that not too many people know where the site is or even remember. I know people remember it or have heard of it, but it was such an effort to actually find the location, I'm just afraid that when we're gone, no one will know.
Well, they'll have to have a little map. You'll go in the Historical Society, and they'll give you a map of all different kinds of important historic, like the old jail. Different sites and whereabouts.
They used to be walking tours, I think the lead.
It'd be on the walking tour.
We'll work on a stone, and we'll work on a fence.
Okay.
I just think it's great.
Well, thank you. So, we need a motion to.
Thank you for your dedication.
A motion to accept this project as a, as a joint venture between, provided the Historical Society says yes, between the town and the Historical Society to get it done.
So immense of it.
All in favor? Second? All in favor?
Thank you.
An official vote.
So, as far as the fundraising goes, can I get stuff off for the Fourth of July?
Yes.
Yeah, well, you just have to talk to Wanda Matthews. She, we really don't have control over the Fourth of July committee. They will tell you if you can have a little spot on, on Water Street.
No, I was, I was thinking a lot of people in town, like maybe seeing if a couple of businesses will allow it.
I can, I can speak for one.
Bring on, you'll have permission to do once he gets the stones, to set it. He doesn't need to come back.
Right, oh.
Well, thank you, folks.
Okay. As long as he doesn't go in the way to plow. Cheerful. Uh-oh, see, no, you'll be trapped.
Throw it out.
Sorry. Next on the agenda is Dangerous Building Article. All right. Jim, you want, you want to help me? You had a suggestion. There's a couple of things floating around of creating an article in town meeting for a fund that will address the dangerous buildings if we have to condemn them. My concern is if we, if we stick to this one, what we've talked about, you've got that building, and we've had unsolicited bids anywhere from ninety-six thousand to one hundred and seventy, I cannot see the town condemning the building, taking on the responsibility of, and it's not. Abating the issue, which means fencing, boarding it in, getting rid of all of the environmental issues, leveling off the back building, turning it into something nice, of course, and then having to, by law, revert it back to the owner. And then the owner keeps it for three years, and may or may not pay us back, and then it goes into the lien process. And I've spent many nights thinking the best interest of the town, and I think that is the wrong way to go.
I agree.
I think that we need to keep the liability to the owner and continue to send them letters that they are in fact liable for the damages and to anyone that, anyone that enters the property, that we cannot, if the town, take on that cost.
And I, and I agree with that, but under circumstances, if they're going back, which is a good.
But the next step is a, is another communication in writing by me to them outlining what's going on and giving them another notice.
Is there someone we can invite from the state, though, to EPA something to?
Renee has already given information to the owner about what, what a, not, you know.
They nominated them to the Brownfield Committee, and they're gonna.
To them directly.
We had talked about that years ago, about whether it qualified for Brownfield.
They say it does. They have to, they have to apply.
Yeah.
But they'll.
So, what, what I will do is during the course of sending them another letter, I will bring up the Brownfield angle with them and encourage them to pursue that, but folks need to understand that without, without making an investment in the cure, there is a problem, the townspeople will be stuck looking at it until some other remedy is.
Now, that's the emphasis again, because if, if the result is they can just take it back and no investment in the town, then the investment in the town is what was there for three years.
It won't last three years.
Well, you know.
I think we recognize Mr. Spivani again, was it called that?
Oh, yes, right.
I have, I need you to fill out one thing that you were saying, so that this, this procedure that you described is we, we fix it, and then we, by law, have to give it back to the owner, the owner of record.
Go to the court, and you do a condemnation, the judge says, how much do you think it's gonna cost to abate the property, and you have to come up with a figure, which is why we get, got some unsolicited bids, just what you want to ask. And we would have to ask to cover ourselves something like a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
More like two hundred.
More like two hundred, of which the town would have to agree to before you even went to the condemnation, because once they say it's to them.
It's yours.
It's ours.
You have to fix it.
And then we have to immediately put up a fence, immediately get it fixed, and that is very frightening, I believe, to the taxpayers to take on that horrible, irresponsible, irresponsible and dangerous building, and it's shameful.
That's what I was asking for, but thank you. My question is then, if the owner gets it back and his adjusted tax bill, which reflects the money that was expended to make it comply, he defaults, we get it cleaned up?
But that's after three years.
Okay.
Three years, we have two hundred thousand dollars vested in a cleaned up project that we may or may not get back, because he may then sell it, and of course, hopefully the lien on it would get the money.
And the adjusted tax revenue is, do we know that ahead of time? Can we somehow figure out what that would be ahead of time?
Well, it would be a special assessment.
You know, because if, if I was an owner that had that, I'd be looking at every option, and I would come to you and say, help me get an idea of what this is gonna cost if I take option A, or if I take option B. So, if we know that ahead of time, or does, if the property owner knows that ahead of time, then he's gonna know going into this, I'm gonna be able to keep this and pay the higher tax rate.
I think it's the whole amount, is it not, Jim? The whole abatement cost is put on the tax.
We would get a special supplemental assessment for, let's say it costs, after the law's said and done, and all the dust cleared, we got a bill from contract for two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
fifty thousand dollars, he's gonna get a tax bill, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
On that actual year that it's happened?
Yes.
It's not like drawn out of time?
Oh, is that spread out?
No, that's, I think that's a little bit asking. It's right then and now.
No, it's not, it's not advertised, it's not like the mortgage. Okay. He gets the bill, he's got up to, what, eighteen months?
Yeah.
Before it goes to lien, and he's got another eighteen, you know, twelve months before it goes for closure. The rule used to be sixty days, something like that.
They just changed it.
But then legislature and their infinite wisdom, once again, made life more difficult for small towns. And now polls, just like the regular tax bill.
So, that's putting an awful lot of money on something that we may or may not, who knows if it's gonna be in that condition in three years.
And here's the thing, go ahead.
Can I simplify this for one minute?
Yes, you can.
All right, is there any way that we can take this building, knock it down for a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred, whatever?
Two hundred thousand.
And then sue the owners for reimbursement of the cost? Simply, simple as that?
Yes or no, yes or...
Yes or no? Can we do that right now?
Well, you don't know, you don't, you don't know if they're worth that money.
The rules of civil procedure indicate that you can take the building...
You take, you, you have the town's attorney.
Yeah.
You get the town's attorney to sue the p, the property owners. That building is dangerous, it's liable, it's gonna kill somebody. The town cannot take that building right now and destroy it, demolish it, and sue them for reimbursement, you tell me it can't?
Well, that's what a tax lien is.
That's what a tax lien is.
I know, but how are you going way, way over my head? You can't cut to the chase.
The laws of civil procedure are very clear. These are the rules of civil procedure set by the laws of the state of Maine.
Well, the rules of civil procedure that I know of involve an attorney...
Yeah.
And suing for reimbursement.
But this is a municipality going to the court and asking for condemnation, they're a different rule.
Yeah.
If you had, like yourself, hurt yourself in there, and you would, as a private citizen, had a cause to sue them, that would be different. But when a municipality takes over a property for danger, it's a condemnation that follows the tax assessment laws.
Prior to any money investment, in the case of, you know as well as I do, anybody walks around that building and falls in that pit, now granted, right now, it's the property owner, but can we, as a town, just representing said public?
No, we, we have, we have no standing on the matter. It's private property, they are in fact trespassing or entering upon somebody's private...
Nobody invited them.
We have no standing, we have no key interest in it. Until we declare it dangerous and take it, now we have key interest. We, for that period of time, own it, and we have to protect inland libel, we have to protect ourselves. And then we gotta get it nailed down and give it back. And, you know, we can't, um, the rules of civil procedure are pretty straightforward.
Well, it just seems that this, this company, this conglomerate...
I mean, if somebody gets...
Understand money, that's all they understand.
Well, they, they need to understand that if somebody were to die in that building right now, fall in that hole, I assume you go over there, or go in there and get killed, they could be charged with manslaughter.
Especially since there's nothing to indicate that that is a dangerous building, or do not come by, or forbidden or public...
They could be charged and found guilty in a court of law in state of Maine, it's been done, of manslaughter. Classy Mr. Mirror.
Could the, could the town, um, put a fence, I mean, we could do something to keep people out?
I don't, I don't think the town...
Is there a way, Mike?
If I may, is the owner making every reasonable attempt to prevent people from wandering into the place?
But that's what I'm saying, there's no indication, there's no signage, there's nothing. It should say no trespass.
I already know that I'm leading, I'm sorry. That's the only way I can do this. And, and has the harbor master inspected the site because it is on the water and it's under his jurisdiction to give the harbor board a report on this, to then ask if the place can be secured by means of a fence, whatever prevents people from getting in and just walk? Because I've seen three people who I know, they're just visiting, and they were walking out around the back, and I'm thinking, oh, God.
Well, when the debris falls in the water, it's then the harbor master's...
Yeah, well, that already happened much, right?
And they already called the post guard, the owner, the reports have been done, pictures done.
At no point they did, because they redid those.
So, I guess my last question is, how much money would our code enforcement officers suggest we have in a legal account to engage in these things? Because we don't want to walk into this unarmed.
Well, I have a budget of five thousand dollars a year that I use for the sending in legal and, and legal consultations that the town, you know, asks.
We just asked for dangerous buildings, yeah.
And it's, and it's for a variety of things, dangerous buildings being one of them. Now, uh, I, I, you know, um, that legal work for this building, if we were to seriously, you know, have the money to take it and, and abate it, just that legal work would be probably, you know, three thousand dollars, just the legal work to address the legal, legally address the taking and the abatement. But as far as a, a general, a fund to be built over time to deal with these matters, we don't have such a thing, we don't set any money aside in, you know, in any amount to speak of to step in, and, you know, the average building around here is between, the takedowns, between thirteen and twenty thousand dollars.
Were you suggesting that we possibly create an article to start a fund to address the various dangerous buildings?
Now, I think if you started a fund, a modest fund, of, I don't know, you know, figure three years rolling cycle, maybe twenty thousand a year, at the end of three years, you got sixty grand in, you set a big target, or you could pick Cheryl off, the typical building's gonna take between, like I figured, ten to twenty thousand, so you figure fifteen...
What was the Rex Hall, was that eighteen or something?
Yeah, and we lost money on that deal.
Because you didn't have the...
It wasn't that thought out.
Right, well, you went to the judge, it didn't come up.
Judge wasn't giving a good number.
Right. So, they weren't doing that.
Special, I, I wasn't code enforcement, so, but I remember I levied a, I levied a special assessment on, uh, the owner at the time of about eighty-two hundred dollars.
And it wasn't enough for him?
It wasn't enough, and, um, you know, um, you know, that's the way it goes. Yeah, they didn't get a, they didn't get a good estimate.
Now, this, this particular building is behind in the taxes as well?
I think they always pay.
Have they paid?
No, they, they're up to pay, yeah. I might further add that, you know, this building, once it's taken down, or in its current state, I'm gonna have to drop the assessment on it this year, because it had that with zero of the toll, it's actually a net, um, you know, that, that portion of the building is like gone. The, um, well, once it's down, and in its current state, it can never be rebuilt in its current format.
It can't have the same use as it, they lose its grandfather use, it's correct?
Well, they could very well lose the ability to ever reconstruct it in its current location, and they will lose the ability to reconstruct it in its current format. In other words, it's in the flood plain, it will represent a substantial, uh, re, you know, rebuilding wholesale replacement. And when that happens, that, that triggers a flood hazard development permit that has to be processed, it has to be gone through. So, the site would have to be completely reevaluated by an engineer, assessed, designed for flood plain management standards, and...
I think I will know this.
Well, you heard him say at the meeting where he disagreed with me when I made that point, remember?
Yeah, I wasn't here, but I heard.
But I, I know the law, and the law's very clear.
Yeah.
It's in this flood plain, uh, it, whatever they were using before to keep it from, uh, falling apart after being flooded over and over again for many years, obviously didn't work.
So, is the rule that if it falls below fifty percent of its value, then it doesn't, it cannot be rebuilt in the way it was? It has to be rebuilt with the new rules and regulations?
Absolutely.
Which, what you're saying is now there's totally new flood plain rules to construct?
Yeah, so, so the reconstruction cost or something that will be, should that have come to that?
Have we sent them a letter that you look back, have seen, have, have made a decision as a code enforcement officer that in fact, that building is fifty percent below its assessed value, it's fifty, it's fallen below its value?
I haven't actually written that letter yet.
And what, when...
But I will.
But shouldn't we?
Yeah, we will write that letter.
Do you need a vote from us to do that?
No, no.
That's your decision.
Yeah, we don't need it.
The other thing that we've been banding about with economic development group is that other towns who are in the throes, and these are much bigger towns, in the throes of economic development, and see a building like this that's holding us back, would just tax the crap out of it, because they were, they're keeping all, any kind of economic development.
Well, there's a theory that I have, and I, I've thought for years, it's kind of like in Japan, when you buy an automobile in Japan, you buy it, and when it starts getting upwards into the thirty thousand mile range of mileage on the all car, the actual excise tax on their automobiles goes up. And it's an incentive for them to get those cars?
Yes.
Get rid of them, chop them up, take the engines out?
Yeah.
Ship them to other places?
And that, that goes back to my...
But main tax law doesn't work like that.
I don't think municipality just do a special...
Sure you can, anybody does it, everybody does.
I think maybe tax, we can't do that, no, I don't know.
How does Chicago and Boston and other cities get away with that?
I don't know that they do.
They do, they do.
And they, they have different laws than we have in Maine.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it would be a very good idea. Goes back to my saying, these people, Beaverman, understand money, they don't understand anything else. If you hit them where they hurt, then they'll move.
Well, in Maine, all property tax in Maine is...
They understand, they understand.
Is predicated on fair market...
They understand building, that's what he does for a living, he builds buildings.
Yeah, he understands. I, I can't add it.
He's waiting for us to do something, that's what they're waiting for.
Yeah, they, they just want us to take it over.
They're waiting for the town to make their move.
You think?
Yes, I do.
And do you really think we should spend two hundred thousand dollars?
And I don't believe this, and I just want to make this clear to people, this has nothing to do with Bobby P. Goff.
Yeah.
He has tried his best.
Well, I know.
He's only eight percent owner, and he has tried his best. That is, that is his heart.
I don't even know if he's eight percent.
I mean, that building is his heart.
He's two point seven, well, eight, I believe, but...
So, I mean, that building is, you know, was his family's, and it's nothing, you know, I mean, he's...
I know, it's, it's...
It's killing him inside.
It's killing him, but, but they, you see, what happened there?
Women burn that, have, they, they don't care. They just do not care. They're waiting for the town to make their move.
But what, what could they possibly be waiting for?
That would be, that would be twenty percent of... They're waiting for us to do their job.
We're not gonna, we can't do that.
That's not our job, it's not our job to fix their building, and it's not our job to take twenty percent of our, our funds that we actually need for taxes. Don't we have to have a certain amount of money in the bank, like a certain percentage?
Nine percent.
And we would be teetering very closely on not the qualified amount of money, money if we took two hundred thousand dollars and spent on one building.
We need to push, we need to push.
Correct.
We need to push these guys, we need to have, we need a strong handle on this.
With what?
Well, you tell me.
What do you mean, Joey?
There's gotta be legal, there's gotta be legal ramifications that we're, I mean, that we're working out to here.
The letter he's sending now causing it to be fifty percent less than assessment will allow, will, will make it almost impossible for him to do anything but to just, but to tear it down.
Well, once I put that letter out there, his, his chances of, of selling that for any kind of money are greatly diminished, in my opinion.
He's not actively trying to sell it anyway.
Yeah.
He wouldn't have a sign on it.
That'd be all right, because then it could pressure him into giving, to say, take it.
Well, that, I, I will, I'll send him letters, but you know, the thing is built on film. And when he, when he has to go to the flood hazard development permit route, that all gets examined for viability.
It's unstable.
If, if the code enforcement officer, that gives a letter that it is substantially less than fifty percent of current assessment, what's to keep the corporation from just walking away from the building, and we have to do something with it anyway?
That's right.
Well, then, if he walks it away from the building, and we end, we end up getting it for tax required property, which is what other managers have said they do, they get the owners to give it to the town, then we then own it, and we will be able to get Brownfield money, fix it up, and it wouldn't be sitting with us for three years while they have a fixed up place, and they could do anything with it. So, that's a better route.
What if, what if we, what if we, what if we socialize with them, the idea that, like they did for the historical society, that they give us the D, they give us title, it's agreed, we'll get the Brownfield grant, get the thing done?
And then we give it back to them?
And we give it back to them.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't see that.
Well, see the difference, is the historic society has definite idea about what they wanted with the building. I mean, they were, you know, moving forward. I don't see that this group wants to do anything, they're just gonna leave it there.
They're not, they're not trying to help the community.
What would be ideal is if we could have a Brownfield grant to clean up that garbage in the back, leave the original building and...
Well, how is what you wanted to do in the neighborhood?
Sure. And the original building is worth saving, and then we could do all kinds of things with that.
The Brownfield committee meeting, the quarterly committee meeting was here last Friday, they held it due to the barbecue, and I brought this up at the end of it, and I thought it had been condemned. Haven't we condemned it?
No, because if we have, then it's, we own it.
All right, well, they, as soon as I said that, they said, yes, it is immediate, it is certainly eligible for Brownfield, and they heard...
Can we condemn it without taking possession of it?
I don't see how.
No, I think once you condemn it, we take it possession of it, correct?
And they, they told me about...
Beaverman being uncomfortable.
They were talking about how quickly Brownfields can move.
So, they must know that, they must have thought the town knew that then, that it settled.
I, I'm, I'm PO'd, I really am, I think.
It's actually...
Another thing we're missing here, and maybe it's a small thing, but someone came to the campground today and said to me, you know, when you come across that, the stretch in Camp Cavallo, and you look over, and they're sitting there, and they're all taking pictures of Lubet's waterfront, and you see the back end of this building?
That big cabin.
That's what we don't get to see, you're right, you're right.
You know, so, all right, so there's the blight on our horizon, our beautiful horizon. So, they're taken away, I mean, our, our beauty.
It's really unfortunate that Nordic delights and the owners of New York...
I will, I will spend an hour talking with the attorney, our attorney, about this, and see if there's any other angle.
Yeah, broach the subject of if a town is in economic development, I mean, we're just getting a, a next letter from Ann Ball about the Maine town, and if we're trying to make this economically better, this town, could we not impose something on that cabin? Like a tax, like a, um, not a punishment, what do you call it?
We try to do a facade order.
Yeah, but this is, facade is one thing, this is just a, a dangerous building, a blight on anything that a town...
Well, we all, we all know that, Rachel, and we've been working on it, and the problem is, as Jimmy said, with the court, you condemn it, you take possession of it, the money, taxpayers put the money in, it goes to a special assessment, it takes, it goes that year, and then it's three years, say you finally own the property, and then they've got a nice fixed up property, and hopefully, if they were to sell it and fix it up nicely, we would get the money back, so I think, you know, I think it's a gamble that I'm not willing to suggest.
The process of dealing, the process of dealing with dilapidated, i.e. dangerous structures in state of Maine is very clear and very laid out. The rules of civil procedure, which is the law, about how to proceed, and, you know, The rules, civil procedure, which is the law, about how to proceed, and, you know, if you try to go outside of that, you don't win, you wind up just wasting a lot of money, you go to court. These things have been ruled upon ad nauseam by the court.
Discuss it with a lawyer, see if they say-
But I will, I'll call her up, and once again, and say, okay, we gotta have a Plan B of some sort. Give me, give me something that, give me some hook where I can-
Jim, before we end the conversation, I'm happy to talk with a lawyer, could we come up with a solution as to whether we are in fact going to have an article of any sort to address dangerous buildings in the town, like, starting a fund, like, ten, ten thousand, twenty thousand, ten thousand maybe?
In, in the town.
And, and we have, we only have one more meeting to come up with articles, and we are the ones putting the articles in.
The next meeting, you'll be signing them all.
We're done, the next meeting, we'll be signing them all. So, do you want an article, or a non-lapsing, for dangerous buildings that can be used for either abatement or legal? I need a number.
Whatever.
Number.
Parades that can be applied at the board of selections, you know, direction-
Along with code enforcement, oh, the code enforcement officer.
To any particular site, I mean, we can't do them all at once, but we can at least pick, pick the part.
You gotta figure, I mean, the taxpayer will decide, it'll be us, but I think it should be on there, something should be on there for it. So, they, they say no, well, then-
And they can't raise an article.
Yeah, that's right, so let's, good, good point, right, good point.
Start at twenty.
Start at twenty.
And article specifically mentioned dangerous buildings?
Yes, for dangers, for the abatement.
Legal.
Legal, for the abatement, or legal-
Blight, blight buildings, whatever it's legal. Yeah, costs associated with the abatement, dangerous and dilapidated structures.
Yeah.
For Maine MRIS, whatever.
Okay.
I know Mattias just did not approve, you know, they have code enforcement that does pretty much, you know, uh-
So, I need a motion for that, and a second. So, all in favor?
I was saying-
Was that a no?
I, I'm just, I'm just really, we, in this town, we've had dangerous and dilapidated buildings for years. IA, i.e., whatever, the Baker Building on the corner across from Godown East, that building has been dilapidated and dangerous for years.
Yeah.
The only way you are gonna get any kind of result is legally, to legally force those people who own that property to do something to it, or with it.
But this would be-
That's what we've been talking about. Are you gonna be, all right, are you gonna be able to do it with the twenty thousand dollars?
Well, you might be able to get rid of that building on that corner there for twenty thousand.
Always get started, and then it starts that, that-
That Peacock, that Peacock pays too much.
And if I might add, the article shows your attention to the legislative body. Yeah. And they seem to be all talking about the same way you're talking, it's like, when do we, when do we get something going to clean these up?
Yeah, it's, it's an effort, yeah.
Right.
Well, it's, they made it a lot worse than it got there a few months ago by saying that you couldn't collect a special assessment. After sixty days, they just changed the rule.
In some situations, pressure, letters from the public shame, whatever you want to call it, causes some people to respond. They have some pride, all right? And other folks, for example, this one down here we're talking about, they're, they're not good corporate citizens of the town of Lubec, they couldn't care less, all right? And they understand the law, they have plenty of attorney representation, they understand real estate. And there are other folks that are just not responsive, to me, no matter how, perhaps it's pointed in stride, and I get a little-
We need to get tougher.
We need to move on.
Okay.
So, Joanna, is that a no, then?
No, that's fine.
It's a yes?
A yes, well, a yes. Yes.
It's a yes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna read them, have the articles.
I think if I buy you a bulldozer, you'd be a hot happy man.
I know, I'd buy me a friggin gun and a lighter.
Stick a dime.
All right, on that one, let's go to the sewer, maybe.
Now, Mattias has voted down hiring a code enforcement officer specifically.
All right, thank you, Jim, we, we gotta move on, we have, we have to move on.
That one will be twenty hours a week.
No.
Yeah, I know, but I just wanted to mention it, Mattias-
Mattias has voted down a code enforcement.
Specifically targeted at this.
Yeah, well, we're Lubec.
Lubec.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Very nice, okay, we have sewer abatement next on the, on the agenda, so it is for... That's sewer commitment. Oh, well, is that what you have on the agenda, commitment? That's sewer abatement, sewer abatement right here. So, do we have a commitment we have to do as well?
Yep.
Okay, well, we can just do it later. All right, there's sewer abatement here for two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, the reason being billing error. I need a motion to correct the billing error on count number three zero six six zero zero. All in favor? I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to correct here, if you say, all in favor? Okay, here we go. And then, which would be, fall under other business, we're just gonna do it now because it's sewer as well. We, the end of sign municipal officers hereby certify the, is this with the sewer commitment we have for each quarter?
This past billing.
Being twenty-nine thousand sixteen, twenty-nine thousand sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. I'm, I'll make a motion that we sign sewer commitment for this quarter.
Second.
All in favor? We got a letter from Maine Downtown Center, you know how they were restructuring, and they kind of put all their life on hold for a while? Thank you very much for staying, Jim, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome, I'll see you guys later.
Bye, Jim. Are we going, Stephanie? Thank you. Bye-bye, thank you so much.
Bye.
She did a minutes for the state card as well for. Okay, Ann Ball sent us a letter, and do we need to do a, they wanna know, they wanna know if the Lubec is still interested in being part of, this needs to be tabled and put in front of the economic development committee, which is in two weeks.
Yes, it does.
We will be tabling this letter until then.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a, do we need a vote, Mike, do we need a vote for a tabled article? Hello? Do we need a-
What did you say?
Do, I, I'm not sure, really, I hardly ever table anything, do we need a motion to vote to table something?
I thought when you table something that you were, your secretary, minutes person would automatically put it on the agenda for the next meeting, unless you specified that you were tabling it on, on two day.
But it says they need a vote, I can just agree, but who here can table the, the discussion?
She was very nice.
And this is being transferred to a committee, I mean, it's not like it's being, you know, it's gonna go to a committee, and the committee will act on it.
And when they act on it-
Then we'll bring it back.
Then it'll come back.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Because I'm, we don't often, I wasn't sure about that. Office, informational offices closed.
So, it's a transference.
Offices closed June thirtieth, which is for year end, and also July fourth, next Tuesday. Hopefully, you get out of the office before the end. Shelfish licenses are on sale July third, and there will be four non-resident licenses sold at eight o'clock in the morning by lottery, you have to be here with your ID and all of the money for it, it will be two hundred for licensed with conservation, and four fifty for licensed without conservation.
How is the lottery conducted?
You, come in the hat, if you're, yes, names in the hat, and they're pulled by someone who doesn't have a vested interest in the lottery. Shelfish, okay, we have a letter, your chairperson, Dennison and Ryan, serving as the land, clam warden, has been a very rewarding experience, and I have made so many friends doing it in the past year. Unfortunately, business constraints make it impossible for me to continue in this position tasked June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and hereby tender my resignation from the position as clam warden effective midnight, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, for Bob T. We need a motion, and second to the afterwards resignation.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, so thank you for serving. We will, I, I make a proposal that we put, put post flyers around town, it would be good if we could find somebody from Lubec that knew the clam, clam blocks to become shelfish warden, because the stifanism is such, so great that I believe it would bring everybody from outside the area to come to the, the part-time job. If that does not bring us, oh, you know, an applicant, then we can advertise.
Hope for downtown first.
I think so, in all the areas, H and D, the Fadens, West Lubec, IGA. Do we, do we have a vote on that? Do you all agree that we advertise?
Sure.
And then-
I'm not gonna apply, I'll tell you that.
Website.
Website, and, and also Facebook page, thank you. Okay, hazard, hazard mitigation plan, is that yours?
It came to me, but Joanna is involved in-
Go ahead, Renee.
We got a letter from Mike Heinemann, who is the director for Washington County Emergency Management Agency. And apparently, there is a hazard mitigation plan from two thousand twelve. He supplied to me Lubec's plan, which is in your packets, and I called Ricky, he's our foreman of public works, to get his knowledge and history. He's thinking about some other major issues that may be coming up, he's gonna get back to me, but he does concur with the completed items that are listed, such as the South Street underground drainage with catch basins, that's completed. The town parking lot was paved, that had been on this list, completed. North Lubec Road installed culvert linings eighty feet to prevent further deterioration of old culvert, that's been completed. But there are two, they've classed them as new. Now, I don't know if this is new problems that are here, or they're new projects that don't need work?
I think this was the new as of two thousand twelve, because I had written down sidewalks on Water Street.
Okay.
And they did not put that on here.
So, that's what I'm bringing to, night, we needed a new list to him.
Yeah, and they, they already have that, because that last meeting that I went to, they asked each and every one of us what we, and I said to look into the sidewalks on Water Street, the people of the neighbors.
Is this money that they provide, is it funding?
They did some research a few years ago for this.
There is funding, I, I just went to this in April, right.
Yeah.
Are there any other projects? There were five listed here, I mean-
That's the one that I outlined to them, but they didn't put it on here.
So, he asked that somebody attend a July twenty-sixth meeting, and he says, in any work you do for this project, please include a note with the man hours expended, work completed, and date. If you attended July twenty-sixth meeting, a travel time is also applied to the local project cost. That is the night of our regular select board meeting, so I told him that I won't be able to go, but maybe I can get Ricky to go, or somebody to help.
Oh, okay, Ricky would be good, yeah.
Represent us.
He would be.
Where, where is it all?
This is in the chart.
Yeah, it's at the same place.
Because he would know what needs to be done.
Says we need our local project information.
Yeah, because I talked with them both, there was a man and a woman, and they both said that there were, there could be some funding.
All right, another business, it says, Tony, are you gonna present something from the harbor board?
Yes, the harbor board.
Did you give everybody a copy?
I believe they did.
Complimentary voice, useful policy.
The, the policy that was drafted was, was based upon the harbor ordinance of April two thousand and fifteen, particularly on the Article Three, which has to do with subdivision, subdivision three dot one dot two. D sub two, to establish policy for municipal harbor facilities, and since the hoist is a harbor facility, in addition, to oversee care and management of the harbor and their facilities.
Are you reading from the ordinance?
Yes, I am.
We need a copy, we all, I, I would, we all want to have a copy of that.
I was just reading from, from the text of the file.
No, I read, I read it, I was hoping everybody would, it says that you're to maintain the fees and, and the, correct? The duties of the harbor board? Copy that. Number two, under the duties of the harbor board, are you reading duties of the harbor board?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that, could you read it again, sorry?
Under duties and responsibilities, particularly on the section, um, who's got it? Section C, to monitor harbor activities, harbor-related contracts, recommend obligations and expenditure of funds related to harbor issues, and conduct such other business as is necessary to discharge the oversight of the harbor. Section D, to oversee care and management of the harbors and their facilities, and Section D two, to establish policy at, for municipal harbor facilities, so that was basically, in essence, a policy that was drafted. And in, in addition to that, the mooring fees, which also compensate for, hopefully, in the future, the maintenance that's required to the hoist appear, as well as the hoist. And an example would be, well, I know we have more than ninety moorings issued, and with the resident having a fee of fifty dollars for mooring, that would generate forty-five hundred dollars in funds. And I think what, I was brought to my attention was that before there is a, a schedule of fees that are, uh-
It is unfortunately, it's a fee ordinance.
Of fee ordinance.
Did you get an answer from MMA?
That some modification might be, may, I guess, would have to be required, including the date of the mooring fee, which was listed as February first, which is actually, I believe, July first.
This needs to be updated, and also with the shelfish licenses, because it's now under the control of the shelfish conservation committee. They pulled it out of shelfish ordinance, and had the committee itself set fees on an annual basis, which I would like to see have done with the harbor board as well, that the harbor board has the authority to set the fees and schedules, which I believe it says in the ordinance.
Correct.
But it also says in the ordinance, the harbor board works under the board's selectment. My interpretation of, of the matter is that the harbor board proposes a policy, and it comes to us, we vote on it, and going forward, and this needs to be addressed and changed, so that neither the mooring fees or hoist fees, or this, in this case, should be part of the fee schedule. I think it's be under the control of the harbor board with, with the final say of the selectment. How do you feel, Joanna, about it?
This is the proposal that was drafted, that the board voted unanimously.
But this may, this may need to be adjusted first.
I agree.
Before.
I researched this today, there is a title reference at the beginning with fee ordinance. I cannot find this ti, this title online at all in any of the Maine statutes.
It may not exist anymore.
It may not exist, so I proposed, posed the question to MMA Legal, they have not responded yet, so.
So, if in fact, we don't, if this is null and void, that this doesn't exist, that fee ordinance is not necessary anymore, then I believe that the decision falls with the approval of the selectment, and that's what we like to do with committees, let them do the thinking and all their special expertise, and then come to us and, right? And then we just oversee that probably the right decision, usually. I don't have a problem with their policy, but I, we do have, we do have to, well, you know.
Might be more homework.
I think that we just need to make sure that it's not conflicting with a fee ordinance, and then what, then I think it should be, I don't see a problem with it. I think that there's been a lot of problems with the hoist, because people didn't get the keys, and then we're have to break in, and, you know, and just-
And may I address that issue?
You may.
We're currently under, under the, in the process of changing the system, currently the system is you insert the key, the motor is, is activated, and you can take the key out and walk away, which has happened, which has cost the town excessive money for electricity. We're currently investigating and have on, on, so to be ready to go, a key system where you have to be there. When you take that key out, the mower shuts down.
That was, that's what I've always known as a voter to do, is to stop when you turn the key off.
And in addition to that, the system would also include an hour meter, because that, that hoist is designed to be ma, to be maintained by hours of operation, so we can get away from the emergency repairs that cost us potentially double than what it should cost us, and then we can get it on track, that every hundred hours, certain areas of, of the hoist need to be examined, or monitored, or oil, grease, and so forth. So, that should, and I just say, cut down on the, on the expenditures of the hoist, from the electricity to the emergency repairs.
And then also, you're looking into monthly maintenance, or, or a quarterly maintenance.
That would be incorporated in the hours of operation.
So, Tony, let me ask you this, it could, is it possible to go forward with your ideas to change to a key structure with your, with the hourly meter, and table the decision that the key would be, would come with the mooring fee, and, but at least get the thing rekeyed, and then we can revisit this in the, at the next meeting?
Absolutely.
And that way, you could get the ball rolling, because I believe you're, you're going to change the key, and then your plan is to number each key.
Correct.
And as the fishermen and the sail, sailors- And as the fishermen and the sail, sailors and...
The key number would, would correspond to your mooring number.
Great, what if they have six moorings?
They'll have A, B, C, D.
They have A key.
A key.
So it doesn't matter the amount of, they get one key per person, even if they have six moorings.
They have six moorings.
That makes total sense. And I think it's a great idea. I, I also think it should be for one year, I think you should see how it works for the year.
That's, thought about that too, on a temporary basis.
And then just everything, you know, if it doesn't work this one first year, then you can go back to, back to drawing board. But it's certainly, the other stuff hasn't worked and I know Mike sat on the harbor board for quite a long time and it's always been a bone of contention, has it not?
Slightly, yeah. So there would be no more, no more security deposits?
Well, I think you, no, I think you have to pay for the key.
You have to pay for the key.
A fee of a hundred dollars.
If you lose the key, then of course the hundred dollars, you get another key, so you're gonna preserve.
And that ends up a lost key.
You're gonna preserve that one key that, that, that was issued to you.
And you have to pay twenty-five for the keys to get it.
Yeah.
So that we doesn't money out of our pocket.
Right.
They lose the keys a hundred dollars. And they have to be current on their mooring fees.
I check.
Which is what's offsetting the cost of the hoist.
Right. And the keys are unique keys, if you can't get, you know, recopied at Eric's and so forth, they cost, I feel the number was, somewhere around eleven dollars a key.
And all of this, I might add, is coming out of the fund that was created last annual meeting by the creation of, of rent, mooring key, hoist keys, mooring fees. Going to a fund where the harbor board is going to be allowing this new changeover out of that money.
And, and rolled over.
And rolled over, so you will pay for the change of the keys and, and the making of the keys.
And it would be self-supporting at that point.
Well, we wouldn't have to bill anymore, we wouldn't have to chase the people around. I, I think we should make a motion to accept this policy as written contingent on the fact that the fee, the fee or, the fee ordinance doesn't have to be corrected. Do we like that?
Yeah.
All in favor? Oh, discussion?
Oh, I check it.
What? We have a discussion. All in favor?
When is this gonna be effective?
Well, I guess it's effective when you get the key changed, when the key's changed.
When the keys changed.
And the mooring fees are paid.
Correct, that's the speculation that they made.
Those two bits.
If your mooring fees aren't up to date.
Moring fee bills will be going out this, next, in the next, by Ju, by July fifteenth, the mooring fees will come out. And then you'll have thirty days to pay. So the minute you come up to pay your mo, hopefully you'll have a couple of weeks to do this.
I would like to get it done, we're listening, in ten days.
Outstanding. Because we, we couldn't send the bills out for the mooring or fees until the fiscal year ended, so we're gonna do it starting soon as they get through, um, year end. Have enough to do with year end. But the billing for moorings has gone really, really well, because we did a second billing and, and people are really coming up to pay. Thank everybody, because that never really worked before. I mean, we need a bill, right? Nobody's gonna say, "Oh jeez, I owe money, where should I go pay?" It's good to have a bill.
Yeah.
Okay, any other business?
Well, it was, it was requested that the harbor board relinquish the property at Federal Harbor. Which was voted upon to be transferred to the shelf fish committee and it was unanimously corrected.
Oh, excellent, thank you. Because I know the shelf fish committee had wanted that.
What, did you property use that exactly?
Federal Harbor. The one you were wanting.
From Maine Heritage Trust?
The one Maine Coast Heritage Trust gave us and there was a stipend to work on it.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yes, and Renee found it. It's founded, it's in an account, so the, so the shelf fish, they thought since it was more, being more, more toward walking traffic and clambers. That it would be, it would just be better under, there's more interest in doing it.
Maine Coast Heritage Trust has maintained the same covenant and stewardship that they worked themselves in in the agreement? And the conditions for the, the improvement are still...
She took me out there and showed, there was like a once a year inspection you have to do and light problems and trash or whatever and erosion, there's some erosion going on.
So now, and now maybe you can come and explain to the shelf fish, some, some of the work maybe isn't being able to be done by the shelf fish harvester. So they can put a little more parking, maybe a better little path or something.
You're in shoreline zone, don't forget that.
Well, we have a direct line to Jim Clark. Any other business? Well, I hope everybody has a wonderful Fourth of July and we all come out to the celebration. It's all, the fireworks are supposed to be Fourth of July night.
One last thing. At the end of harbor meeting, Red Falcon offered it services to assist in the lighting of the fireworks with, uh...
Thank you, because we would not have been able to do it without him and thanks to Cooks.
These are still going on down by.
And Cooks, yes, Cooks Agriculture and Cooney and all kinds of people have volunteered to help. And it just so happened they fell on a Tuesday and when they called and I was temporarily doing charmed position. They said we have to spot left for the Fourth and I'm so excited that we got July Fourth.
Everybody's asking, are there gonna be fireworks?
Yeah, so now that we have July Fourth, I think we're gonna get July Fourth again. So at some point it will be on a really good night, not Tuesday, but, but all the activities will be on Tuesday.
Tony, update?
Tony, harbor board, third Thursday of the month at six?
Uh, yeah, I was looking for the date.
So we end on there.
Next DM, Dean's meeting is September twenty-fifth, we've taken the summer off. And I would like to give this to Renee. It is a report of our meetings, you want reports? So you got reports? We are up, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over last year.
Wow.
So we are in the black.
Oh, for the ambulance?
Yep.
Fantastic. Yay. Rachel, recycling, did you find anybody for recycling here?
Denise, Denise was glad to join us and we had kind of a free forum meeting.
We had a free forum meeting, but it was a legal meeting.
Yes.
Because we had form.
Yes, and we discussed, we're, we're, all of us are venturing into new classes and trying to figure out where we can bring it more locally controlled, okay? Our next meeting happens to fall on Bastille Day.
Ooh.
So you might want to stand up and sing the Nocé.
I'm not French.
Dan, please start our...
We're probably gonna have a wee, it's July eleventh, three. I guess not a lot to do. Also, since I was there, yay, quite a TV, right? On July twenty-sixth at four.
Oh, right, 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 let's be forced to come up.
And I know we mentioned all the July Fourth stuff, I know since, in the previous meeting, I'd like to commend the historical society as well, their launch, official launch. The weather didn't cooperate as, as nicely as we'd like, but...
Didn't seem to matter, did it?
No, no, great.
But the official start of what is an absolutely phenomenal project. Everyone on your team should be commended, it's beautiful, just beautiful.
Yeah. I was not able to attend the marathon this year, but I understand that it was a great success.
It was.
Um, everybody at the Campabello loved it, they said it's beautiful. One of the toughest courses, they've ever been on.
We had our debriefing last night for the marathon and, or somebody called it the autopsy. And it was, it was good, and I, what I think is, everybody makes it great, everybody who works on it makes it great. The weather is a big part of it, you know, when the weather is beautiful, it's just great. We had one casualty out in Campabello, she had a heat stroke or heat something and was taken by the ambulance and she's alright, she called me later on, so... But we really did have a good time this year and it seems to be a minimum problem.
If I could come into, we had a runner who ailed along the way and I, I hope she found out she was going to go to our border patrol. She said she was assisted by a mountie.
Yes.
For several miles, which inspired her, she, it just, when she told the story, had a big grin on her face. And then when she got up towards the bridge, she went, "Ooh, I wanna get..." And he was gone, he was like a masked man.
Yeah. Wow, that's...
But kudos to...
The mountie, mysterious mountie.
Our neighbors to the other side. Commendable work by whoever that stranger is.
You know, I have to say this about the marathon, this is my fifth year and last year was third year. But we have made more friendships than the Campabello people. And that has done, the marathon has done an amazing amount towards securing friendships. And I think Campabello and Lubec has historically had some kind of little friendly enemy, you know, competition. This has dispelled all of them.
Lovely.
We love our Campabello friends.
I have a couple more community entries. Congratulations for surviving the marathon.
Yes.
We have Safe Harbor will be in four weeks from today, I think it was July twenty-sixth. And then Economic Development is two weeks from now. So every other week, the same Wednesday is a select board meeting, they'll lead the economic development or Safe Harbor. We welcome anyone with any input on either subject to attend, you're all welcome and your input is listened to. So if you have ideas for economic development or for Safe Harbor, please come an hour before this meeting and then you can stay for the select board meeting. And then you can give us more help and input, because it's not five people, it's the whole community that we're working for, all thirteen hundred and forty-five.
And celebrate and have it, happy and safe Fourth of July weekend.
Yes, and on that lovely note.
What can I do?
Oh, probably comment.
We didn't have any public comments.
I do now. It's come to my attention that some people are getting lazy about their responsibility walking their dogs. If your dog empties itself, it is your responsibility to pick it up and that's on public or private land as spelled out in the town ordinance. We have a lovely little town, we have many visitors that come here and they bring dogs. And I notice almost all of them pick up after their dogs.
Yes. I agree. Thank you for that.
Uh, no, don't thank me, thank your animal control officer and her efforts to educate the dog going public.
And if she's created little assistance for said reminder. And spectacles that we will be seeing shortly, so thank you to our animal control expert.
Okay, and anyone else? Motion?
Vote for John.
Second.
Thank you.